I'd like to call our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll, please.
Belkey?
Here.
Belzak?
Here.
Clistic?
Here.
Kenny? Marques?
Here.
MacIver? Shower?
Here.
Five present and two absent.
We have a quorum. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Does anyone in the audience want to address the council this evening on any of the items? The items that... They don't have to be on the agenda this evening, but if there's any issue that you wanted to bring up to our attention, please feel free to come up to the podium. Okay, we'll move on then to... Since there are no minutes to approve, we'll move right on to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Mayor. I had some complaints from a few residents of some speeders on Sawyer Road between Frontage... Actually, Portsmouth Road and Seventy-Ninth, so maybe if we can have some patrols in that area just because recently, especially during rush hour, so seven to nine, and three to five, three to six, there has been an increase in vehicles doing a shortcut in between there, so we've got a few residents with concerns there. So, thanks.
That's an interesting street for a shortcut, you know?
Yeah.
I know.
From Portsmouth and head north to Sawyer and Seventy-Ninth.
And it's a long street, which really makes people hit the speed. Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, any other receiving of communications? Then let's move on to the mayor's report, and the first item under my agenda is the consideration of a motion to approve the reappointment of the members of our Citizen of the Year Committee, and they are Bonnie Cussera, Carol Mallers, and Merrill Salazar. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belkey? Any discussion? The roll, please.
Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
And why don't I do number... The item B at the same time, so all four of the individual... All three of the individuals can come up at the same time. The next item is a motion to approve the appointment of Linda Borovjak to the Citizen of the Year Committee. Do I have a motion? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belzak? Any discussion? The roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Would all... Would you come forward, ladies? Merrill's not here tonight. Yeah, okay.
It's like planning a wedding.
We get to be sworn in again. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye, and state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Citizen of the Year Committee according to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Thank you, ladies. And Bonnie, do you want to say a few words about the details of the commission?
Linda, I need you to sign. The other ladies are being reappointed, so...
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Linda.
Congratulations.
Okay. Oh, is that... Is that on?
No, you know, it looks like it's not plugged in.
Oh, swell. And where does it get plugged in?
Right over by the wall over here by Tom.
This year, our... Is it on? This year, our event is going to be on Saturday, March 3rd. Reception will be at 6:00 PM, and the dinner will be at 7:00. We are changing it a little bit. Instead of going to a plated dinner, we're going to family style. We will have roast pork, which is a favorite of everybody's, baked chicken, pasta and Italian sausage. We will have soup and salad. A dinner... I'm sorry, a vegetable along with potato and Helen's famous kolachki. And it will be at Alpine Village or Alpine Banquets, right here on Cass and Frontage Road. So, all we need now is our nominees, so...
The nominations are sent to City Hall?
They're actually... They can be mailed to City Hall. They can be emailed through City Hall's website. I've also gotten some email sent to me personally. So...
And what's the deadline, Bonnie?
The deadline is January 2nd.
Okay. All right, so the deadline for nominations are...
Right.
Is January 2nd?
And we will announce it to City Council on the 15th. And I believe our coffee will... Coffee cake reception will be on... I want to say the 22nd of February, but I don't know if that's sure... If that's right or not.
But it's in February, yeah.
Yeah, it's on the Tuesday because President's Day you don't meet, so it's the Tuesday after.
Okay. Thank you, Bonnie.
And, oh, and we will be... Instead of $30, it will be $35 this year. But it's still the open bar, everything that we have, so it's just an increase of $5.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to everyone for volunteering and being willing to serve. I appreciate all that you do. It was my... It was my segue into local government, being on the Citizen of the Year Committee, so I value... Yes. I will... I value your service, yes. Value your service. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to the city clerks' report. We have our vehicle sticker lottery again.
At our last council meeting, we announced the 10 organizations that were asked if they would like to participate in our vehicle sticker lottery. We had three organizations that agreed. The Darian Chamber was the winner of the vehicle sticker lottery, but they are unable to fulfill the duties that are required with the vehicle sticker. So, this evening, we have the other two organizations that stated that they would like to participate, and one is the Darian Historical Society, and the other is the Darian Rotary Club. So, I'm going to fold up the ballots once again.
Could you make them bigger?
No. People have to see that we've got them, so that we can hold them up.
Okay. I can't look.
I'm trying to fold them all the same, the two, so... Didn't want to pre-fold them.
Okay. And we will let them...
Shake them up today.
There's a lot of them, right? Okay, and they're both in there, so...
Oh, they were sticking together.
Oh, that's okay. All right. And the winner is the Darian Rotary Club, so they will be notified that they are responsible for doing the...
The vehicle sticker this year. Very good. Thank you.
And I have one other item to make?
Yes.
Okay. Meet and greet will take place with Mayor Weaver on November 20th from 6:00 until 7:00 PM here at the City Hall in the upstairs conference room, so please join her.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move to the city administrators' report.
No report, Mayor.
Let's move to the department head reports. Oh, Dan's out in the hallway. Thomas, do you have anything?
Nothing.
You have nothing? Okay. Okay. Dan, you're on. If you'd like to come up to the podium right away or stay at your seat there, I don't know which.
Whatever's... I could take a walk up to the podium. And Mr. Shower's going to be passing out some literature. There may have been a problem with the printing, so I'll wait till everybody gets a copy of what they should be looking at. What this refers to is a storm sewer concern that we have at 801 Plainfield Road. In other words, right next to McDonald's, just immediately east of McDonald's and towards 75th Street. In summary, what we have here, and excuse me, but some of the pictures, it looks like something got caught up in the printer twice, so you've seen a duplicate of a...
Oh, the pin numbers.
One picture onto another. We just put this together late this afternoon, so excuse me for that. In respect to 735 801 Plainfield Road, it's two office buildings, again, just immediately east of McDonald's. There's a storm sewer pipe, and in fact, there's two of them. There are 72-inch pipes, each one. Those are culvert metal pipes. Those culvert metal pipes basically drain everything from Cass Avenue, 67th Street, almost up to Claremonts Road, and the flow is from the south to Walma Drive, basically is where it dumps out into. Again, this is a major... A major infrastructure, and the pipes are rather large. The problem becomes is, we're not sure how or why these pipes were actually placed into the locations they were. When I say locations, it looks like they're on private property. While they're on private property, we're not sure if there's easements in place. Currently, we're doing a title search, number one. While we're doing this title search, there is something referred to as duty and responsibility for the Public Works Department when situations like this happen. If this pipe was to collapse tomorrow totally and right now the ground on top of it has somewhat caved in, we've got to barricade it off. There's an expense to this, of which I'll get to in a minute. But the bottom line is, if this was to be total cave-in, it would affect everything north of Plainfield Road. And again, it might not have good results because potentially homes could be flooding. With that said, what we're looking at doing is, currently, we have a title search in place to determine if there are easements that were recorded. Number two is that we're going to take a proactive approach and do some exploratory... Exploratory work as well as a fix on what needs to be fixed at this point. The fix is excavating approximately 14 feet down through a subcontractor, cutting the pipes open because the bottom is deteriorated from what we can tell. The structures themselves are massive structures that need to be put in place, and these structures are referred to as manholes or vaults. It's not just going to be putting a Band-Aid on a pipe for the simple reason that this is near a 90 or a curve, and there's no other way of inspecting it. And once we get down there, this will be a junction point, a future inspection point, and a junction point to be able to work out of. We tried to televise the 72-inch pipes as well. While we were televising it, there's robots that actually go in here and televise the condition of pipe. That's one of the pictures in here. It's very murky, and that robot basically drowned, if you want to say. It fell into a three-foot scour... Scouring effect from the water that was rushing through there. The robot was saved, and he's okay, but...
Well, that's good.
Regardless... Regardless, we can't further videotape this until we get these manholes in. So, we want to let the city council know we're looking at an expense of about $63,000 for the excavation, which involves a subcontractor. We don't have the equipment for this. And we're not sure... When I say we're not sure, we're looking at two different options. Number one is to get these manholes... These are rare, very large manholes, and they could weigh up to 60,000 pounds apiece, in which case we need special permitting, cranes, et cetera, et cetera. So, we're looking at possibly pouring it in place with conventional concrete forms and concrete. So, I just wanted to bring the city council up to date, and this is one of the... Probably, in my career here, one of the most major storm sewer infrastructure early failures that we've identified at this point.
I'm having a hard time placing the property, and you say the owner is Republic Bank. It's a trust on the property?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Rossi, it's under the realtor... It's under the management of Rossi.
Okay. I am having a difficult time. You say it's... I can see we're on Plainfield Road.
Chiba's? Yeah, where Chiba is at, so...
In that... In that area, but it's closer to Plainfield Road?
75th Street in this case.
Oh, it's... It's... Oh, but it's an address of 737 Plainfield?
Correct.
Oh, that's what was confusing me. Okay.
Yeah, because it's basically the pipe, the box culverts that were probably installed by DuPage County at some given point in time. Those are under the Plainfield Road and 75th Street. Those are different structures, and so those structures are fine. These specific structures are cul... Are metal pipes and probably been in the ground for 35, 40 years.
Okay. Can we blame this on anybody? I mean, is it...
We're trying to find... We're trying to find blame on someone, yes.
Yes, the county. I'm thinking. I'm thinking with all the improvements they made.
Yeah, with all due respect, I'm not sure. I think it's just a wear and tear and...
Yeah.
You know, while we've always inspected the asphalt walls and critical points, never would you thought of that this pipe...
Dan, where's the collapse?
It's in the parking lot. It's towards the... You look at your map and you look at the...
It's this section right here? This is the collapse... Where the collapse is taking place?
737 at the 737, towards 737 Plainfield Road, but the actual collapse is on the northern... Excuse me, southern end of that building towards the grassy area slash parking lot area.
What about the parking area where those cars are? Is there any collapse or sinkage there at all?
It's cordoned off at this point. You know, again, is there a potential that somewhere else something might be going on? Yes, but usually you do get a pretty good indication of the asphalt begins to mushroom, if you want to say.
Is that how this was discovered with the pavement?
Yes. It started out with a little hole, and the management company called us. We started investigating, and basically, it's a 10-foot hole underneath there.
What about... I mean, are you talking about... This is going to have an impact on businesses that are in that center there?
One of the... Hopefully, the answer is no, and one of the things that we're looking at is for a long-term fix. There's what they refer to as slip lining. Slip lining is a type of material that encases the pipe with this heavy polyethylene type of material. Again, we're not sure if this pipe is eligible for that. But back to your question, there is a potential that, yes, there may be some impact if we need to go conventional methods with remove and replace excavation.
Dan, what's our worst-case scenario on this if we're held responsible? What are we thinking?
I'm thinking about half a million.
Dan, the alderman mentioned if we're responsible. Really, I mean, we've looked at this. You're waiting for the title search, but it certainly is flow from Darian through...
Yes.
It just happens to be through this area. It's not... It's not a parking lot that's collapsing that's servicing, you know, just that store. This is... It's major, so... And again, it's not a long or out in the county right away, which was the first thing Dan was checking on to see whose real jurisdiction it was, so...
Why was this placed in the area that it's placed?
You know, it looks like there was an attempt to create an easement. And I don't have... I don't recall the year. It appears that it never got recorded with the county of DuPage. I'm not sure how or why, but the documentation is very loose, and I know I've researched DuPage County records, and there's no easements in place.
Is there something that might have been there before that center was even built?
That's what I'm hoping that the...
That's what I was thinking, too. There was probably nothing there but farmland.
Yeah, there were... You know, again, there was some... We found an old plat... I'll call it an eas... A plat of easement that states dedicated to the city of Darian, but unfortunately, it was, again, never recorded. So, whether the intent was to record or whether the intention changed, you know, that's what we're really having a difficult time with. That's why the title search will be able to tell us if there's identified easements on their property.
Okay. Okay, you're... First, you said 63,000. Now, you're saying half a million.
No, I'm sorry. If we need in the future, whether it's next May, there's going to be additional work. There definitely will be additional work. We need to get these manholes in there so we could do further inspection processes. So, these manholes, if they're put in today or if they're put in in May 1st, are still going to remain in the ground. So, there's no questions on those manholes. But we need to get these manholes or the structure in here to be able to determine what else is the extent of this damage.
So, that's manholes, it's digging, as opposed to the larger amount, which could potentially be putting in new pipes?
Correct.
Okay. Now, this work, you're going to be hiring a contractor. This is not going to be done by your staff?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I thought. This sound is pretty serious.
Yeah, we have T&M rates already from the 2017 ditch project. We did have a section in there that asked for hourly rates, and that's the hourly rates that we're going to assign to this job.
Okay. Who was the T&M?
Scorpio.
It is Scorpio.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Dan? Okay, so you're going to keep us posted on where we're going with this?
Yes.
It sounds like this will have to be... It exceeds all of our authorities here without, you know, council approval to expend this money, but it sounds like we're at a level where we need to take action relatively quick.
Yeah, this was, you know, we... Dan got some of his final reports actually this morning, or we could have put something on the agenda. But again, you know, this... As close as we have to an emergency, it's really this. You know, we have to get in there. It's our responsibility. I think once it comes into, you know, something that we... Where we know we're going to do and that plan, we'll certainly bring that back to the council, and Dan will keep the council updated in terms of what, you know, what the future plans are. But for now, we're just telling the council what we know.
Two weeks. Our meeting's November 20th, but will that be sufficient time? Should we have a meeting sooner than that?
I think by the time we get things coordinated, two weeks, three weeks is probably how long it's going to take us to make sure the material... Right now, it's the material that's the most difficult to determine what we're going to use, what utilities are in the way. Again, it's a 14-foot dig, so on a 14-foot excavation, you're looking at a hole of 25 by 25 feet, and it's a rather significant hole, so...
And the structures themselves, you're getting prices on those now?
We have to look at two different options, because in order to get the structures here, the size of the structures we need are approximately 60,000 pounds apiece. So, after 60,000 pounds apiece, we need special equipment to bring them in, which, again, is what they consider extra-wide loads and et cetera, so there's a cost to all that.
These are precast?
Correct. And we're not sure if we're going to use precast. We're probably going to go conventional pour... What they refer to as pour-in-place. Pour-in-place is conventional forming of that sort. So, one has to outweigh the other. We haven't determined that final cost yet.
On some of these, you know, we do come back to the council to some degree after the fact here, not after the 500,000, but if Dan has to do the exploratory orders and things, if we have that already in two weeks, we can come for council approval. But Dan might have... May have already had to order, you know, some of the structures, so we're not waiting...
Okay.
You know, months for that, and you're getting into the winter season.
I don't think there'll be any dissension on the council on something of this nature.
Some of it might be where we dig everything, you know, depending on what utilities are in the way, whether it's ComEd, NiCor. So, that's going to be another facet of it, because they may have to relocate temporarily. And/or we're going to excavate, leave this large hole open, barricade it all off, and then determine, okay, is the concrete structure pre-ordered? The best thing to go... Best thing to do, or is it the pour-in-place?
How close is this to the school?
It's... Our Lady of Peace is probably another 1,500 feet.
Yeah, that's my concern with this big gaping hole sitting there with children.
Yeah, no, we would put, you know, regular fence... Not snow fence, regular fencing in place if that needed to be.
Okay, all right.
How close are you to the foundation of those buildings?
We're far enough where it's not going to be an impact.
Okay. Any other questions for Dan?
Are all the businesses aware or communicated with this concern?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Well, the management, owners and the management's...
Brought this to your attention.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 171813, the amount of $417,496.45 from the listed funds, payroll for the period ended October 26th, and the amount of $259,332.59, for a total to be approved of $676,829.4.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Bel... Belzak? Seconded by Alderman Shower? Discussion? In the roll, please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The warrant has been approved. Let's move to the monthly report.
The monthly report for the five months ended September 30th reflect general fund year-to-date revenue of $8,233,683, expenditures of $5,442,661, for a current fund balance of $3,316,789. Water fund year-to-date revenue, $3,816,399, expenditures of $2,789,076, current balance of $1,493,760. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue of $237,362, expenditures of $154,702, current balance of $468,317. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue has a deficit of $750, expenditures of $83,738, current balance of $98,662. Capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of $157,358, expenditures of $2,779,315, for current balance of $6,357,960.
Any questions for the treasurer on the monthly report? Okay, he has a report on the police pension that he'd like to go over.
Yeah, last Wednesday night, we had our quarterly meeting with the police pension fund with the investment advisors. As you all probably are aware, at this point, we have approximately $26 million, and it's split about 50/50 between the two investment advisors. It was a good quarter. The return for one was about 2.4% for the quarter. The other was just over 3%. For the two... Well, for the two quarters, they handle it on a calendar quarter. Our fiscal year unfortunately overlaps about one month, but between the two of them, we're at a return of between 5 and 6% for approximately the six months we're looking at. So, as everyone knows, the stock market's been doing nothing but going up, fortunately, so hopefully, we'll be able to improve on our performance last year and keep things in shape.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Okay. Let's move to standing committee reports. Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Minutes from our October 2nd, 2017 admin finance meeting were approved tonight, and our next admin finance meeting will be held on Monday, December 4th, 2017 at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room.
Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, the Municipal Services Committee approved the minutes of the September 25th, 2017 meeting, and our next meeting is Monday, November 27th, 2017 at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
Okay, and Alderman MacIver's not here? Do you have a report for her?
Yes, I do. The police committee is scheduled to meet on Monday, November 20th at 6:00 PM in the police department training room.
Okay. Let's move on in our agenda. How to turn the page here. Okay, we have another opportunity for anyone to address the council with any questions and comments. and comments this time. If you have any questions and comments on any of the items on the agenda this evening, please feel free to come up to the podium. Then let's move on to old business, and there be, there, there is no old business. I will move on to the consent agenda, and we do not have any consent agenda items this evening, so I'll go right to, yes.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, for item J, you will have to vote on this, because we'll need two-thirds.
This is not a consent agenda. These are all-
I'm sorry, the new business, yes.
Yes, they are all separate items. Okay, item A, under new business, is a motion to grant a waiver of a raffle license for the William F. Murphy PTO. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Any discussion? The roll, please.
Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The motion has been approved. The next item is a motion to grant a waiver of the rifle, rifle, listen to me, raffle license bond requirements for the Darien Women's Club. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any discussion? The roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The motion has been approved. Item C is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an engineering agreement with Christopher Burke Engineering for pavement corrings for our two thousand eighteen street maintenance program in an amount not to exceed eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any discussion? The roll, please.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The motion has been approved. Item D is a motion to approve a resolution to enter into an engineering agreement with Christopher Burke Engineering for the two thousand eighteen street maintenance program in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. Motion to approve, Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any discussion? Just for the, the viewing audience or the, the audience here, the two items that we, the one we just approved and this one, these all have to do with our street maintenance when we do our resurfacing of our streets in, in next year. These are prequalifications that we must do in order to, to get ready for that program. So, the roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The motion has been approved. Item A is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Associated Technical Services for the two thousand seventeen water leak survey valve exercising pro, program, and creating a G I S valve and hydrant database in an amount of eighty-one thousand, nine hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-two cents. And included in this is a per-unit cost for the leak detection phase in the amount of three hundred ninety-five dollars per main line or service leak, and nine hundred and fif, nine, ninety-five dollars per fire hydrant leak or main line valve in amount of, of, amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, five hundred. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Discussion? The roll, please.
Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The motion has been approved. Item F is a motion to approve an ordinance amending Title Four of our building regulations, building, Darien Building Code of the Darien City Code regarding solar codes. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Clistic, seconded by Alderman Marques? Any discussion? The roll, please.
Clistic?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The motion has been approved. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing, whoops, I'm, I'm passing up one, approving a variation to the Darien zoning ordinance for eighty-one, eighty-five Chapman Court. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any discussion? I think Alderman Belkey addressed the issue, her questions about the effect that the easement would have. The roll, please.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The motion has been approved. Next item, item H is a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation and development agreement for seventeen W six one five North Frontage Road. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower. The owner of the property is in the back, Judy Greiman, and the, the potential developer of this property is up here in, in the audience this evening, too. The roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The motion has been approved.
Madam Mayor, you need to vote on this one as well. This is the two-thirds majority.
Okay, all right. This one, okay, this was-
Mayor Weaver?
Wait a minute. Oh, this, oh, you're saying the one we, we just voted on now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, aye.
Okay, six-
That's it, the H one is the two-thirds majority or the next one?
Correct, not the J, yes, that's just the H. That's the annexation.
Okay, that was the, that was the two-thirds?
Yes.
And we- Don't we have two-thirds without my vote?
No, it's six votes.
No, we only have five, Alderman.
It's five point two-three, so we need six.
I'm, I'm, I'm the point two-three, huh?
I didn't say that.
Okay, that was a, that was an aye?
Okay, we have six ayes and two absent.
Okay. The next item, item A is consideration of a mo, a motion to approve an ordinance annexing certain property of the city of Darien, seventeen W six one five North Frontage Road. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Clistic? Discussion? The roll, please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Okay. Item J is a motion to approve an ordinance rezoning the property in accordance with a certain annexation and redevelopment agreement for seventeen W six one five North Frontage Road. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower. I have a question, does that property get a new address now that it's incorporated?
Yes.
Do you know that address now, or is it, is it forthcoming? No, we don't know it yet. It has to be filed before it's, yeah, okay. Okay, the roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.